Hello, everybody. This is the Wellington Board of Education. We're having a special meeting with budget discussion. Today's Thursday, March 20th, 2024. It is 5:31 PM. We are discussing our budget and have potential action this evening based on some new information. Mr. Stevens will be filling us in on said information.
Alright, so you have two papers in front of you and I'm also gonna share them online for the folks that are online. I told you things I wrote, maybe I shouldn't have written this summer last time I gave you this form on Tuesday night. Because I had this, it said in parentheses as of today. And then within 24 hours, as of today changed drastically. So I redid this form. And to talk about 2425, you have to understand one important piece of information about 2324. And I'm gonna show you what that is. So we had budgeted for two out placements. We are gonna have five more. So we're gonna have a total of seven. If that information changes in, we can come back and change it. But there's no way we could go into the next year's budget not having this plan and not making that change in the budget. It's it's a big amount of money.
You mean to say we had planned for five, we are adding two more?
Correct, but we have seven total, correct. We had planned for five. So we have, in essence, we have seven right now, okay? So cross out the 2425 budget for special education out placements is accurate. Because it's not, um, this sheet here, just so you understand now, I told you I was pulling strings to make it work. Just to show you, the 60,000s are the new. So add 120,000 to this year's budget. Now we're in the whole 762,000. The green is what we've already done. So it brings us down to 343,000. And then all of the list that I gave you last time, that was, you know, here's how I planned to do it. That list is basically fully utilized now. And non-lapsing goes way up. So the excess cost was the same, the after-school grants were the same, the school choice access was the same, the staff support specialist was the same. A new one, I talked to Donna. And she's gone for us thankfully into our insurance line by line looking at our current census. And she thinks we're gonna have more savings there. So that 80,000 is on top of what we've already transferred in and 50. So that's a, if we didn't have that, we would be in big trouble. So that, we're banking on it being there. And that's being verified in the business office and I feel, we're, we both feel confident about that. The P salary excess and the CES salary excess was gonna be in case. It has to be used now. And then if this would, this is why it's important for the current year. Is because it would apply $85,000 to the non-lapsing fund to the current budget. That's important because you have to apply non-lapsing account money next year. I don't know how you don't, and I'll show you what I mean in a second, in a second. So the battle without reviewing all of those things, we're still in the hole $40,000. So when I say remaining balance options, the health insurance transfer number three, there might be one more $40,000 buffer. We're not transferring that yet because we're not sure and, but that's what we're crossing our fingers about. Other budget remaining pieces are any other budget program that's not spent. So I opened up the budget, right? And then said quickly, curtail your spending very, so I had given each school about 35,000. Now they're down to 25,000 each to get them through June 30th. That's not a lot of money. Non-lapsing fund under, is an option under remaining balance option, and I'll tell you flat out, you probably could just cross that off. Because in the example I'm gonna show you in a minute, it is crossed off in one of the examples. It's fully expended, it would be every single dollar. You won't have any non-lapsing fund money at the end of this year to utilize anymore. So you were banking on taking $85,000. But can you make her, hold on, I'm just gonna stop sharing. Give me one second. Tracy, I'm gonna make you a co-host so that way you can unmute when you want. Make co-hosts. Okay, so the important thing out of this graphic is so you understand that I am applying $85,000 to the current budget. And that's important because we have $272,000 in there right now. Now minus 85, okay? And now let's get into the impact of next year, right? This is where it's going to be an issue. You approved, and this is document number two. You approved a $9,770,084 budget, okay? That was a 676% increase that went to the Board of Finance already. And now we have new information, okay? The new information is, we have two new out placements that are not budgeted. And we are estimating between their tuition and their transportation, they're gonna cost $348,963. That is their cost prior to any grants or applying any excess amount. That is the bill, okay? Now, to figure out what we're actually gonna pay, the math is there for you. So for any student over the cost of your four and a half times your per pupil, that's what you have to, you get excess cost on. So if you look at that, our per pupil is 22,270 right now according to the state. You multiply that times four and a half. That means we are responsible for the first $10216 each. So that you now add the 10216 plus the next 10216. And you get, you are now responsible for $20432, okay? That money is not eligible for excess cost. Now, you take that 348, the starting number, and you subtract that 200,000. And this number, 148531, is the number that we estimate is going to be eligible for excess cost. The state is paying about 70% of that amount, okay? So we, the board, will pay 30%. So you then take that 148 and you say our share that we have to budget for is 30%, so you multiply by 30%. You get $44,559. You are responsible for those funds. So now you add the two together. 2024032 plus 44,559. You are responsible after excess cost for $244,991, okay? That has to be in your budget, okay? So basically what I did is I ran scenarios. And I think it's important for everyone who's in the budgeting process to understand what happens. Well, like someone says, well, do you write all the grants? You can, we do. And here's an example, if we didn't. If we took our current budget approved, 9,770,000. And you just said, we don't have any additional grants, we're, we're not gonna apply anything else. And you added 348,000 to it, you'd get that first line, 10,119,000. We would have a 10.57% increase in our budget. That's before excess cost and before applying any non-lapsing funds, okay? The second line, we are going to apply for excess costs, okay? It's going to happen, we are going to do it. But it's important for people to understand that we have to take that step. So when we apply for excess cost, we're applying for funding that's beyond, basically it's, if you look at this, we're gonna get about 104,000 in excess cost. Because you just subtract the 348 from the 244, okay? So the difference now is when we apply excess cost, our budget is 10,015,75. An $863,000 increase. That is with excess cost applied and no non-lapsing offset. So walking into this evening, basically without applying any offset for non-lapsing, which we do not have in the budget right now, you're the 944. Okay? Next phase is your discussion points. You have to apply some non-lapsing account funds. You have some, it's just how much do you wanna do? Remember, I said you had $272,000 in non-lapsing account today. You have to subtract the 85 now that you're applying to the current year. That leaves you $187,000 in your fund, okay? You have to determine how much money you wanna apply. I have to, in the first example. So 93.5 is obviously half of 187. So the third example down, basically you're applying excess cost grant. And you're applying $93,500 of the non-lapsing fund. You would end up with a 9.9 million dollar budget, an 8.42% increase. But it would leave you a balance of $93,500 in your non-lapsing account. I did that example because, to be quite frank, I am quite nervous about this year going from two to seven. That if you have no buffer next year, your first phone call when somebody walks in and says we have another outplacement is straight to the Board of Finance. You have, will have no buffer if you spend all your non-lapsing, lapsing account. It is an option, but it needs to be very clearly stated like, this is a big issue. You will have zero dollars there. And that is exactly what the last example is. To get to a 739, you apply the excess cost grant and you apply every remaining dollar that we have in non-lapsing, 187,000. And you end up with a budget that's 9.8 million dollars and a 7.39% increase. Now what I'll tell you is value, I wish my stocks operated this way. Value is incredible. When you think about our current number, 9,770,084, I'm going to say a mere, for a mere $58,000 more, 57,991. For a mere $58,000 more to get you to 9.8 million, you are getting $350,000 worth of services. You're only increasing the budget 57,991. And you are getting $348,963 worth of services. That is really, really important to understand. We're getting a lot for that spending of the 57,000, so.
But we're keeping zero in the non-lapsing account.
But your, your point is well taken. You're keeping zero percent in the non-lapsing account, so. Two things, number one, Samantha wasn't here, but you approved a not, a, a budget of 9,770,084. And it was unanimous. For everything you put in there, it was unanimous. You all agreed on that. Which says you felt it was important enough to send it to the Board of Finance, okay? My personal recommendation is, I think you should stand by that. If you truly believe that was what was important to put in your budget, you should leave it there. And then determine what you want to apply for non-lapsing funds. So I'll finish and then you guys can talk. The challenge of the 187 is exactly what Samantha just said. You have zero, you will have zero dollars in there. The only way, your plan to spend every dollar, the only way you would have any non-lapsing funds next year would be if at the end of this fiscal year, by chance, there's $7,000 left in the budget. And you ask the Board of Finance to put that in your non-lapsing account, that's what you would have. But let me tell you, you saw the budget on Tuesday night. The odds of you having any really real money to deal with an outplacement coming in, slim to none. So I felt it was important, I talked to Brianna, and as soon as I got this information, it's brand new information. If something were to change, you go back to your 676. But this needed to happen, this meeting needed to happen because if you are gonna change, you need to take another vote. And your vote needs to be on a different number than what you presented to the Board of Finance, and that would be shared tonight. I did already email the Chair of the Board of Finance and said, FYI, new information came in yesterday. The Board is having basically an emergency budget meeting to discuss tonight. And there may be an increase in the budget and we can share more information then. So that is the information I have, and I think it's up to you now to figure out what you want to move forward or if you want to stay where you are, which I absolutely do not recommend.
Um, I am, so the non, the excess cost grant, I'm a little confused about that. When we talked about it in the budget presentation, when we did the big budget presentation.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't remember this 4.5, like times 4.5.
Been calculated for you. So when, when you think about our budget document, the very end where we do grant deductions, or sorry, reductions. And it says excess cost grant reduction, we've already calculated that. So our, our, our students who are outplaced might cost $500,000. We know we are responsible for the first 100,000 basically that I'm ballparking this for each. And then we calculate the excess cost and that's what we put in the budget document. It's four and a half times, and the example I'll give you is, this is a bad, bad legislative setup for us. As a small district, our per pupil is higher. So we have to spend more money before we start to get, or before we're eligible for reimbursement. Your per pupil is 17,000. Times four and a half, you're at a lower number and you already start to get reimbursement. It's, it's a bad design, unfortunately, it's what we live within and we have to pay the first four and a half times.
So when does that come in, like, we keep talking about the excess cost grant applied, but that's not immediate, like that's, takes time to.
No, but we're, it's, it's, oh, it's always been there, they've not done it. If we apply each year, we give them our numbers right away, what we expect to get. The numbers, it works out, so like even though our first payment's in February, we don't necessarily, our bills aren't due for outplacement tuition like prior to that. We might pay some, it works out, like they all know, we're getting money from the state and it's, we're gonna be able to pay our bills. I'm not concerned about getting the grants. What I don't know is, we, these are estimates based upon what we've learned in 24 hours. They're reasonable estimates, but 247 tuition could be 275. 101,000 in transportation could be higher or lower, like there's so many factors. But you have to plan for something, and the number we have in front of you is the number we feel comfortable with planning off of based upon everything we learned from our phone calls.
I'm sorry, I have just one more question, and so you ended your, um, presentation today with saying you don't recommend us not doing anything, or staying where we are. Meaning like.
This 9,770,000. If you do that, I, like, if you don't make, take action tonight, you're gonna be the same number that we've already presented to them, and we're gonna be short a bunch of money, because these two out placements, they're not in the budget.
Oh, right.
So you need to, you need to give them a new number.
Yeah, I put two out placements, okay, sorry, and it's, and I just wanted to make sure of the other thing.
Right, which is why you need to have this meeting, because if you leave it at 9770, that's the number they have, and that's the number they can go off of. And I will tell you flat out, you'll be in a budget freeze all year long next year.
Well, it's not feasible. I mean, if our bills are higher than that, then we need to have the money.
Correct, which is why I'm recommending, you need to take action. It's just a matter of how much money do you, you know, what's, what's a comfortable piece? And maybe that's part of that's an action, a conversation with the Board of Finance. You know, is it, what balance do you wanna leave in your non-lapsing?
So do we have to make a motion to start the discussion or do we just talk about it?
I think you can talk before you figure out where you wanna go.
I go for number three.
I agree. What's number three?
Number three, maybe leaving a little nest egg for the, for the school district.
842? Yeah. What are your thoughts? Sure, um, I feel like it's, it's too, it's way too risky to leave nothing in the non-lapsing fund. And I feel like, um, we have to almost take care of our budget that way. Like we have to have something to fall back on if this happens next year. And I just, I, I don't think it's physically wise to have zero dollars in that fund.
We're paying a little bit towards and asking the Board of Finance to pick up the rest kinda deal. So we're like trying to meet them in the middle, like we're gonna put this money towards it, have a little nest egg over here, could you help us and get the other side?
Should we leave more than nest egg? Because I mean, we're only leaving 93.5 and one student is gonna be more than that if we have another outplacement.
Good thought.
Well.
That way we don't have to, I mean, they're all speculative numbers, but you know what I mean?
I think the Board of Finance is, um, like at their pleasure, I guess, like, because it's gonna fall back to them either way. If we have 93.5 in there or we have zero in there, they're gonna end up, it's gonna be a conversation with them.
I know, but it just was 93.5 because you just had to, pretend to take a, an easy number.
But if we will the zero out number two, like that's what you're saying, potentially, no, oh?
I'm saying number three, but.
Plus 20,000.
Yeah, you know what I'm trying to say?
I did, she's, she's not saying do the 187, but she would like to see a balance, I think, in the non-lapsing account higher than 93.5.
Yeah.
She's saying apply, you know, 70,000, so that you take the 23, you know, the difference, and you put that. So you, you're, basically in essence, your, your balance of your non-lapsing account would be 110,000 versus.
People go into actually supporting one student, yeah. Yeah, these are just examples, it's hard, like hard and firm numbers.
Are we able to figure out what number, to get to the 110, or what percentage would that throw with the Board of Finance?
I can calculate the percentage, it's just a matter of where you wanna do it. The reason I have to, because it was close.
And I know we don't know the exact numbers anyways, I'm just, I don't know if I'm throwing my key.
And just out of like, think about what we've been able to do this year, there's, again, the big ifs, right? 93,000 for me is a great attack on an additional outplacement. It is a great start. Could it be better? Absolutely. Do I think I could cover the difference if it were similar, similar situations, right? Similar situation, and you've got everything over that, we're only gonna pay 30% over the 100,000? We, I, I think that through creativity of what we've done, there's a chance that we could do that again. That we could cover that difference without having to go back. So it's like how big of a buffer, I didn't wanna be greedy, not that it's coming across as greedy, but I wanted them to understand like, it's, it's not enough for an outplacement. What we're saying to you is, it's not enough for, to cover an outplacement, but we're gonna do our best to cover the rest and we're not gonna ask for more.
Weaving the non-lapsing fund up again.
Well, 93.5.
No, no, if we cover an outplacement next, next year or whatever, that would drain the non-lapsing.
Correct. Correct.
So taking Samantha's idea, yes, I know, I'm getting to that. What, um, what you were hoping Phil could give you a, like in-between percentage, right?
Just like if we went with the 110, what would that be roughly?
Yeah, can you? I know you know. We're not gonna clear for, for Joe, for them and I talk to these folks, okay, Anne?
Um, just a question, um, we've been talking about the chimney and the roofs and all that. We weren't accounting on any non-lapsing funds for any of those repairs, were we?
We did for the chimney, but they have it in CIP.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Arthur, hi.
I'm going off Sam's idea, but my number is not only 20, I would be comfortable if you left one and a quarter in the non-lapsing fund because that's about, according to the numbers Phil just gave, that's about what an outplacement would cost. That's almost, that's almost full coverage for them, so that would be my suggestion.
Tracy, did you have any questions while we're at a low, or thoughts?
I agree, we shouldn't, um, deplete the non-lapsing fund, and I feel like, um, last year we, we took 150,000 out of non-lapsing fund in June to prepay some things for this year, and it, it didn't, it helped out, but then we're, we're, we're in a deficit and had to freeze the budget for a long time, so these unexpected things keep happening, um, and we need to have a buffer, I agree. I am going to have to step out in a couple minutes for, um, the parent conference, and I'll return when it's finished, I apologize, wearing two hats.
No, thank you for making time and offering, and back to you, Arthur.
Yeah, sorry, I just thought of something else to bring up too. We're looking at this from just a one-year thing, and this is not a one-year thing, so if this happens to happen next year, if we, if we say an outplacement comes in next year and we have the funds in the non-lapsing fund to cover them, and then there's nothing that'll be transferred back into it at the end of the year, or very little, and the following year, should this happen again, then we have nothing. So as much as we can keep in there as possible is the best for us to cover as much as we can, but down the road, this could happen again, and if we don't have anything in the non-lapsing fund, we literally have nothing to cover it with, and it's back to the Board of Finance and back to the town.
Sounds like if Arthur's done, yeah, so it sounds like everybody wants to make sure money is left in the non-lapsing fund. We just need to come up with a number, what everybody feels, and I like the 125 because it does almost cover a full person. Okay, I'm gonna tell you, this is what I think it is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna double check my numbers. If you, um, instead of applying 93.5, you applied 62,000, I'm gonna tell you, walk, talk through my math. You've got $272,000 in your non-lapsing account. You have to take out 85,000 because we're applying that this year. It leaves a balance of 187. You're gonna apply 62,000 of that. That leaves a balance of 125,000 in your non-lapsing account, okay? So now, I'm gonna walk you through my math as I do this. The current budget approved is 9,770,084, okay? We have to add in the two new out placements of 244, 991, because that's with excess cost, okay? And now we have to subtract the money that we're going to apply via non-lapsing, that's 62,000. You get 9,953,075, which is checking out for me. I'm gonna subtract that from the current budget, which is 9,151,473. You're gonna get an increase of 801,602. And that is divided by 9,151,473. And you have an increase of 8.76. That would leave a, that option would leave a balance of 125 in your non-lapsing account.
Well, I think, um, that makes more, that's a solid plan, I appreciate that. Like that makes more sense than 93.5, which is almost an outplacement, but not quite. And I think that the jump in percentage is, um, I mean, I know these are not solid numbers, but that makes more sense to me, the 125.
Excuse me, I think like everyone's saying, I mean, heaven forbid we get, then this is just based on one, and we recently had two, one, you know what I mean, like two at once. But I think that for the Board of Finance is showing more of an effort to be a little bit more self-sufficient. Then, I mean, and I believe we might have to go back anyways, but at least we're, we're trying to cover something we might need, which might look good.
Yeah, that's a justification for keeping more in the non-lapsing is that we're trying to take care of ourselves and, yeah.
So we don't have to come back if I'm next year.
Right, I mean.
Right, I think usually.
Well, no, but.
Yeah, we've done that, right?
Yeah.
It's the optics of trying to take care of a potential.
Business.
Yeah.
Yes, and beginning with the, everything that is on the budget now is need-based.
And that we know, understand, and stand behind, so then to add to this piece that we're. Throwing everything we can at this to help all of our deficits and plan appropriately for the future, um, I think those are two really strong. Performances, I can certainly stand that. Arthur?
The other thing to remember too, is at least that keeps um, it in the eight percent range, so to like the average person, eight point zero one or eight point nine nine is still in, in eight percent. So eight point four or eight point seven really isn't gonna sway anybody one way or the other, so I think that we didn't raise it so much that we're, we're creeping into nine territory, so I think that's good.
Okay, yeah, for sure. Anne?
Um, I think Phil, as you present this to the, the Board of Finance, um. We should remind them that for the past, what, five, ten years? We've come in with one percent, two percent, maybe a three percent budget, so that we're really, um. Being very fair and honest about it, and this one year, we have this exceptional situation. Um, where instead of two, three outplacements, we have seven, that hopefully, um, they can understand that, and not only that, but every single year. We presented those one, two percent, maybe three percent budgets, we also gave money back beyond our non-lapsing funds. So theoretically, there should still be some money in the town pot. For money that we've returned over the past decade anyway that I've been here, so. Hopefully, they would understand that.
Add to that, that the cost of everything is on the rise, and we have two um. Elderly buildings that require a lot of help right now, so I think those four points are pretty important, yeah. All right, I'm gonna give everybody just a minute to like, think of anything else, um. And then what we will need to do is come up with an actual um, proposed budget dollar amount. And I have our both of them scheduled out here, so.
Right.
What did you say, Kim?
Nine, so I'll say again the whole thing. Um, and what I'll do is um, as soon as this meeting's over, I'll make a new one of these, because I think this is a good picture for the Board of Finance. I'll remove the um, the ninety three, five option, and replace it with the, this is the new one. Nine million, nine hundred fifty three thousand seventy five dollars, that is the total cost. It is an increase of eight hundred, one thousand, six hundred two dollars. It applies sixty two thousand dollars from the non-lapsing fund. And is an increase of eight point seven six percent. It leaves you a balance of one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in your non-lapsing count, in Sam's words. To be self-sufficient, which I think is a good way to say it, and I will also add that is one point two six percent of your budget. That is your emergency fund. One percent is your emergency fund.
Okay, it sounds to me like everybody's ready to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
If not, please tell me now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Am I able to do this, or?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is that fine? You'll correct me if I'm wrong?
Just make sure you replace the old number.
Nine million, seven hundred seventy eight thousand eighty four dollars.
Yes, replace that one.
To nine million, nine hundred fifty three thousand seventy five dollars.
Correct.
All right, here we go. I move that the Wellington Board of Education amend the two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty five proposed budget from. Nine million, seven hundred seventy thousand eighty four dollars to nine million, nine hundred fifty three thousand seventy five dollars. Thank you. Thank you. Any last discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Eh, I mean, Tracy, eh, you should, just because they're not on screen, you should roll.
Yeah.
You, they should all be alone, you, so.
Okay.
You wanna call them?
Yep, Anne?
Yes.
Um, Arthur?
Yes.
Tracy? She's still here.
She might have to step away.
She is gone, okay, um, John?
Yes.
John, hi, Samantha?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Give Tracy one more shot.
Tracy, are you still there?
Okay, so.
So she abstaining technically?
She's the ease, yeah.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, yes. One abstentional, so the motion carries.
Perfect, so obviously, I will have more information for you at the next meeting about the current budget, and. I think we have some solutions already, but we're gonna try and, I told you I was gonna wait on some transfers, I'm not gonna wait on transfer down, I'm gonna start moving money, because I need to see that. Gaps that come down, I'll have more accurate numbers for the cost of this year, um. Um, we believe sixty thousand is an accurate number today. So, eh, eh, that will come along, and what I'll do is I'll, once you finish your meeting tonight, I'll replace this, and this is what we'll uh, share with the Board of Finance tonight. It's discussions tonight, it's not appropriations tonight, um, it'll be the next meeting, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Um, where they start to do appropriations, and that's where you'll know what number they're going to put in. I think they're gonna get a sense tonight of. Uh, what to do, and I very clearly state, um. If you, if they cut this, it's gonna be a big issue for you, if you're not gonna recover. Um, big money, meaning fifty thousand plus, um, without eliminating the stock numbers. It's just, that doesn't happen. So if you're into, they're saying two, they're gonna try and put you at a five, you're um, talking about.
Percent?
Yep. Cause that's the number that was shared the other night, um, if they're talking about a five, you are talking about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar stock. Just, I think that's important for people to understand that that doesn't happen. Through supplies, that happens through many positions.
Um, do you know when the appropriations is happening? I know the hearing is the tenth of April.
Oh, it is.
It has to be before that.
Give me one second, and it's right on their website, which is very handy, they had their calendar. Finance. C I P, thought about be a budget meeting scheduled. They stated that their appropriations would be, um, so discussions three fourteen tonight, appropriations three twenty one. And then three twenty, that's only if needed. So if they don't get through it next week, they can do appropriations also on the, the twenty eighth of month.
Okay, so we will find out on the twenty first of March. What they're responsive, and hopefully between now and then, we'll have plenty of um, public participation and support along the way, and will help us if we need to make changes at that time as well. Anne, did I see your hand up there?
Yeah, Phil, when you mentioned that five percent, um, if we did have to go there. I know that one of our, um, and that kinda takes away what Sam said about being self-sufficient, um. That next year, would we have the option to go to the Board of Finance to ask for help? To pay for some of these placements outside of our budget, if that did happen?
You could, but if they're not gonna do it now, they're probably not gonna do it then. Unless they come and find a pot of gold. I, if they don't make that commitment this year, I don't think they'll make it next year. I think if they, if we had another outplacement. And we didn't have the buffer. I don't know how they. Right, couldn't help us, because we'd be stuck, um.
That was one of my questions there, is what happens if we do need to go back to them in the middle of next year? And ask for assistance, and their answer having to be no, or not enough? Then it's up to us, and we have to fix that problem ourselves, which.
Mid-year.
Is, in, right, in the middle of the year. So like worst-case scenario, imagine needing to speak to an educator halfway through a school year, because you need to let them go. To me, that's completely. Unacceptable, never happening, so, um, we gotta do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't come down to it, and need our people.
Brianna, the last thing I'll say is, if the, if we get a sense tonight where the Board of Finance stands, we don't know that they. They may say, look, if this is where we need you to be at, if they give us a number. You could also call another special, we need to have discussion to say. You know, well, do we wanna discuss it, and, and, and because then people know what you are considering as a board, if they do. Send you back to make cuts and don't make those decisions themselves, it becomes public what you're gonna cut. Um, and. Sometimes that helps you, and sometimes that hurts you.
So would it be, that's, I think, why I was asking too, about the appropriations, like, um. Is it possible for us to pull together and meet again prior to that, if necessary?
That's, that's correct, right, if, if they say. We're not giving you a number, take this back, there's no way this is gonna happen, if they tell you that, and you wanted me to get it discussed. Um, you could do that. You could also just say. We gave you a number, that's our number, that's, that's your decision as a board, and then whatever number they cut, they cut, and then you figure out in the end. How you're gonna apply it.
I mean, I think we should focus on today, we have the opportunity to upstairs to be passionate as a group, that's standing together, or wherever.
Right here.
I'm used to going upstairs, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here, and you know, support our budget, I mean, when I was the reporting secretary, I've seen budgets come in double, double digits in the twenties. And you know what I mean, so I, I think that if, you know, we all are in agreeance, we all stand behind our budget, I'm not gonna worry about, whoa, what if this happens, what if that happens, you know what I mean? I think we should try to stay positive and focus on today, and focus on being like, this is what it is, and. B, C, X, Y, and Z, we're all very well spoken, we all have our reasonings for everything, it's not like we're just asking for, for random things, just because. We feel like it, we have no plan to do, you know what I mean, we have a plan for all these monies that we're asking for, and I think that it is, um. I forgot what word I was gonna use, but, you know what I'm saying?
You're being thoughtful.
Yeah, I think that it's. It's a higher budget than maybe what we've been used to presenting in the past, but it's not the highest budget that I've ever seen, it's not the highest percentage I've ever seen someone ask for. Especially people who don't necessarily have. A reasoning or a quite as efficient of a plan behind it as we do, and we've talked about it, and. You know, multiple times, and.
Services are up that percent.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
They are.
Like, sometimes it kinda is what it is, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was the last item.
I plan on staying here.
All right, I can go.
Good.
Can redo this form if you.
Fantastic. Okay.
That was last, that was your last item?
That is all we need. Move to the chair.
We have another question to speak, and we're done.
We do not, we're done. Oh.
Thinking about yesterday, I can't remember what it was.
I did, okay. You just gotta go.
In favor of the journey at this time?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. All right, thank you, we're journeying this evening at six forty P M. Welcome to see y'all.